Good morning. We're here for Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee. Councilman Eric Casella from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. Also in attendance are Councilwoman Dani McCray, 2nd District, Councilman Isaac Yitzhak Schleifer, 5th District, Councilman Robert Stokes, 12th District. On behalf of Mayor Scott, we have Nina Themelis from Mayor's Office of Government Relations. On behalf of Council President Nick Mosby, we have Matt Stegman and Nikki Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And staff to the committee is Marguerite Curran. We've also been joined by Council Vice President Sharon Green Middleton from the 6th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We are missing Council members Burnett and Dorsey, members of the committee. We'll get started. We are here today for Council Bill 21-0032, Salary Director of Public Works for the Purpose of Establishing the Salary for the Director of Public Works and Providing for a Special Effective Date at the Request of the Administration. Bear with me for one second. A couple of quick ground rules before we begin. Please stay muted until you are recognized by the Chair. When you are not speaking, make sure you mute yourself. You are called on by the Chair, please identify yourself before you begin speaking. Please be sure to speak slowly and clearly. Committee members and city agency officials are expected to keep videos on for the duration of the hearing unless there are technical issues preventing you from doing so. What we're going to do is we'll start out with a brief introduction or introductory remarks from the administration. I'll defer to Daniel Ramos for that. Then we will get into city agency reports. We will take questions from council members. We will do public testimony. And we'll get started with Mr. Ramos. Please take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, honorable members of the committee. We are here today to discuss the salary for the DPW Director. For one, for some context and before the agency reports, we are in a very unique position with our Public Works Department. This is one of two positions that will go through this format. This and the Solicitor position, all other positions are set by Board of Estimates. We believe this was done to so that folks on the Board of Estimates were not voting for their own salaries. I do want to call to attention and before the agency reports, how unique our Water, our Public Works Department is in comparison with jurisdictions across the country. We are a full-fledged Public Works. We own and operate a water system. We buy and sell water wholesale to our surrounding jurisdictions. We are the, we provide the water service to neighboring counties. We also run a sewer system and do a full-fledged Public Works Department. We know that the Department of Public Works is not at the level that our citizens deserve, and so we are moving forward with a salary that we believe is competitive that will aid us in our search to bring on a world-class Public Works Director. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Daniel. We will start with Department of Public Works. My understanding is that you all have deferred to the Department of Law, is that correct?
Yes, this is Marsha Collins representing Department of Public Works. You are correct, Mr. Chairman. It's kind of self-serving to comment on this type of bill and at the very least seems to be a conflict of interest. But we just simply pointed to the Charter as noted by Mr. Ramos that these, both the Director of Public Works and the salaries for the Solicitor are set differently, as he noted. I would just say simply that we have a department of over 2,700 employees and that's a range of responsibilities between laborer right on up to chemists, people with PEs, professional engineer degrees, PhDs. We have very hard-working people. We've had to struggle with pandemic, just like everyone else, but we must keep our water filtration plants and our wastewater treatment plants running 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And that has been since, in the case of the wastewater treatment plant, since 1911. So there has never been a break since 1911 and going on into the future. We must operate these plants 24 hours a day and meet all of our permits. We hold about 100 permits based on the work that we do here at DPW and that carries certain responsibilities. And many of our people who are trained in this work are certified and it is their certifications and their professional duties that are on the line if they do not work hard to meet all of our permits. There's a lot of responsibility here. We have over $2 billion in capital improvement programs. We have an aging infrastructure that we have to update. This is very challenging. We have a solid waste team that is also working very hard to do all of its work to keep our city clean and safe. And they have been also some of the frontline workers under COVID, you know, who are just performing their duties. And I think people have gained a new respect for these folks. And we were very happy to get recycling, curbside collection back online. So there's always a lot of challenges in this work that we do. We like to say that we, the work we do reaches every person in this city. We would like to continue to do that work in collaboration with communities because we need their help to be successful. So a director of this type of department has to be comfortable with handling administrative duties, with working with three different unions, with sitting on the Board of Estimates and having fiduciary responsibilities as a manager of these enterprise funds, of which we have three. So it's a very comprehensive, complex program that requires a fair amount of experience and flexibility on someone to lead this type of department. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Marsha. We've also been joined by Councilman Chris Burnett, 8th District, and Councilman Ryan Dorsey from 3rd District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And Brittany Lewis on behalf of Council President Mosby. Just a reminder to council members, if you could please keep your videos on for the duration of the hearing unless you're having technical difficulties. Next up, we will go to the Department of Law. This is approved for form in legal sufficiency. Is that correct?
This is correct, Mr. Chair. Lady DePatriot from the Baltimore City Law Department. Good morning, I should say. And we are report, speaks for itself, I think, under Article 6, Section 10b. The salaries of the Director of Public Works and the Solicitor, who are the only two non-elected officials on the Board of Estimates, are required to be set by ordinance. And they're set, they cannot be increased again during the individual's term. And there's, there's a lot of AG's opinions and things like that that discuss what type of increases are considered increases in salary that cannot happen during the term as opposed to other types of increases that may or may not be, may result in an increase but not, do not run afoul of the Charter or the constitutional provision in the state constitution, Article 335.
Thank you. Mr. Herbert, Department of Human Resources.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Department of Human Resources supports the increase. Our Office of Classification and Compensation did a salary, a market salary study in determining that the $245,000 salary is both competitive and would allow the city to attract and retain qualified talent for all of the myriad of challenges that you've already heard that our Director of DPW will face. And we feel that that salary is commensurate with others who perform similar duties and responsibilities across the country.
Thank you, sir. After we get through Finance, I'm going to ask Daniel Ramos to share that analysis on screen so that we can, we can talk through that and then we'll get to council member questions. Department of Finance, I believe that's Mr. Moore.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, and honorable members of the committee. Aaron Moore, Assistant Budget Director of BBMR. The Department of Finance does not oppose.
Thank you. Mr. Ramos, do you want to pull up the presentation? Marguerite, can you give him, does he have screen share?
Nina Themelis, do you mind pulling, pulling up just the comps that we utilized?
We're good, we're good.
And Mr. Chair, just while, while that's coming up, I do want to just point out some key differences. There are not other jurisdictions like us. Other jurisdictions have a county that, or a regional authority or a private utility that manages the water and sometimes even separately the sewer, that they're different agencies or different bodies as well as, as well as doing solid waste. So while these comparisons were helpful in us this, in us developing the salary that we thought was, was competitive, there are some nuances and some very key differences between us and a lot of other jurisdictions. For example, when we pull up the list, New York City has three separate agency heads making over $280,000 that do the same work that we are expecting our Public Works Director to.
Nina, are you able to pull up that spreadsheet or share it?
Mr. Chair, I have it pulled up. I don't have sharing capability on my screen at this time.
I think Marguerite's going to get that over to you in one second. Good. Nina, you should be good now. Colleagues, we all should have had this, or should have received this this morning in our inboxes. Is there anyone that did not receive this?
Mr. Chair, I'm still not able to share. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, she's, I think she's, she's working on it. Good to go. You're good, Nina. Should be. Perfect. All right, Daniel, if you, you want to just walk us through what you've got here?
I'm actually going to defer to the Director of Human Resources and I can help fill in any gaps. Quentin, are you, can you articulate what went into your analysis? There's also a separate, a second tab that also has salary information. But Quentin, if you wouldn't mind.
Absolutely, absolutely. When we do a salary, a market study, a market study, we are looking first at scope of work. And so when we look at a title that says Director of Public Works or CEO of Utility, what we're looking at is what that person does. And so we reach out to our counterparts in the Offices of Classification and Compensation in those various jurisdictions to understand a bit about what the scope of work is for that position. Does that, does that jurisdiction own the responsibility of providing their water utility? Do they have a wastewater utility? Does that director also oversee solid waste? Do they have street cleaning? These are the types of things. Are they under a consent decree? Does that person sit on the jurisdiction's spending board? We're trying to get as close to apples-to-apples as we can to compare. And what we have discovered is that when we, when we can't find an apples-to-apples comparison in our local region, we have other certain comparator cities or jurisdictions that we will typically look at next. And when looking at those jurisdictions, we try to look at like jurisdictions, which means we look at jurisdictions that have a similar average salary or average income for the citizens. We look at the, both the median and the, and the average housing cost in the region. We look at the percentages of, the percentage of citizens that are below the poverty level and that live in, in continued poverty. That allows us to determine whether or not that city is comparable to Baltimore and all of those economic features. And typically, we will compare ourselves to cities like Philadelphia, Milwaukee, and in some instances, Boston. What we did with our DPW Director is we started gathering information around the scope of work in other jurisdictions. And again, as Mr. Ramos alluded to, what we found is that Baltimore is quite unique in that many of the larger jurisdictions, the larger municipalities, larger cities, the scope of work is typically divided up between various directors. So there may be a Director of Public Works whose job it is to oversee solid waste only. And then there may be a Director of Utilities whose job it is to oversee water. And even with that, there are certain nuances where there is a distinction between water distribution and then the wastewater side. Then there's also the street cleaning feature, which is also parsed out in many of these other jurisdictions. Baltimore has, has, is unique in that all of these functions fall under the direction of one director. What we then tried to do is to find a jurisdiction where the scope of work most closely lined up to what we're asking the person to do here in Baltimore City. We landed on WSSC. While WSSC is the utility only, it is very, very close in the scope of work to Baltimore City. They, WSSC oversees three reservoirs. Baltimore City has three reservoirs. WSSC has two filtration plants. Baltimore City has three filtration plants. The, the output is very similar. WSSC outputs 390 million gallons of drinking water per day. Baltimore City is 360 million. Both have about 1.8 million end-users of the water. WSSC also provides water to its surrounding jurisdictions of Prince George's County, Montgomery County, and Washington. Baltimore City provides water to Baltimore, Howard, Harford, Carroll, and Anarundel Counties. And so the, the level of complexity, the requirement for engagement with other jurisdictions and that, that level of complexity led us to feel more comfortably comparing the Director of Public Works for Baltimore City to the CEO or the Director of WSSC, even though they don't have a solid waste component. Because when we looked at the scope of work, that position was the most closely that aligned to the duties and responsibilities, even with respect to the administration, administrative functions that would be required of the DPW Director. As has already been mentioned, the DPW Director sits on the city's Board of Estimates or the Spending Panel. The CEO for WSSC is, is on that Board of Commission and that's the decision-making body. And so there are additional administrative functions with that position as well. And so we looked at that position and the salary for that position is approximately 200, about $289,000 per year. We then adjusted that salary because the DC market, they're in the DC market, which consists of Washington DC, Montgomery County, Prince George's County. That, that market is above what our market is. And so if you were to look at salaries across, let's say, DC government compared to the salaries across Baltimore City government, what you would see is that those salaries trend much higher than the salaries here in Baltimore City. So we adjusted the salary to reflect what would be more comparable for our market and we landed at the $245,000 salary, which again, the, many of the other jurisdictions that you see here, when we peel back the layers of the onion, the duties and responsibilities and their scope of work, it dwarfs what the scope of work is of the Director of Public Works for Baltimore City.
Thank you, Mr. Herbert. Anything else to add before we jump into council member questions?
I think that's it.
Okay. Colleagues, or first, Nina, can you, Ms. Themelis, can you please take down the presentation? Thank you, ma'am. Before we get into questions from our colleagues, I'm going to ask that we keep these questions from being district-specific. I know there is a litany of issues that we deal with with Department of Public Works regarding sanitation, street cleaning, the issue of Bresco, water and wastewater, water infrastructure failures, water billing issues, so on and so forth. But I ask that we keep those questions to high level around those topic areas if there are questions related to those as opposed to questions about an individual water main break, per se, or, you know, solid waste not being collected on a certain block on a certain date. So with that, I'll start off, I don't see any hands raised. I'm just going to start off with Councilwoman McCray. Any questions?
My hand was raised, Mr. Chair.
Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you. I'll, I'll be quick. Would you just, could, I guess anyone could answer this. Just kind of explain how you're also, we're heavily connected with Baltimore County and I think Howard County. I don't know if that was brought up, but could you just kind of explain our connection with them? Because that's also a very important piece that, within job duties. How is our, you know, what is the connection with what our city director does with Baltimore County and Howard County?
Sure, I can, this is Quentin Herbert again, and I can talk about what we looked at in our study. I would defer to the department to answer more specifically. But what we looked at is in those counties, while they indicate that they have a utility functions, we know that Baltimore is a distributor of their water supply, right? And so the Director of Public Works for Baltimore City has a direct relation, a direct responsibility for the supply of the water to not only Baltimore and Howard, but also somewhat in Harford, Carroll, and Anarundel Counties as well. So it's a pretty, it's a pretty broad responsibility jurisdictionally that Baltimore City maintains responsibility for.
Okay. Thank you. That, that's important. And then just to close with my last question, I think this person again has to be very familiar with our apprenticeship system. And because the Department of Public Works was the first to really start apprenticeship through that water and wastewater system. And I hope that this was part of the questioning, I guess, as you're moving forward with the hiring of this person. Can you comment on that?
So while we do not have, you know, a candidate in, in mind, we, we have to proactively go through this body before we can offer any formal salary to, to any candidates. We did have, we did ask questions. We did look for candidates that had experience in, in areas like ours. So aging infrastructure, large capital programs, you know, poverty rates and diversity at, at similar rates to our own. And as you know, we, Mayor Scott is very committed to this, to, to getting more young people involved in city jobs. We've partnered with Green Job Networks, with Lazarus Rights, with ROKA in order to bring people in and create a talent pipeline for our solid waste department. So we, we believe that there, there is opportunity there to, to bring those programs on and make them successful.
And Councilman Middleton, I will also say, it was not only one of the first, but it's also the longest-running apprenticeship program in the country. And, and we have, have seen that many of our water instrumentation technicians have come through that apprenticeship program. So you're absolutely right that, that the, the tradition that Baltimore City has in developing talent in those regions has continued and will continue.
Thank you. And I just think that that's important for whoever the, the lucky person is that's going to be hired, that you, they have to know this process so we can continue to expand, especially since this council body is very astute in trying to push our equity lens, you know, in these. And of course, that's added work. And I'll stop there. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Councilwoman McCray, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My questions have been answered.
Thank you. Councilman Dorsey.
Mr. Chair, can you come back to me in one moment, please?
Sure thing. Councilman Schleifer. I'm going in order of district in case there was any question of that. Next, I'll be sure to go the, the backward.
Yeah, I did, just like on a high level, I heard everything you guys said and I appreciate the research that went into this. This position is representing the Director of the agency that does receive the most amount of money in the city. So why is this not the highest salary in the city?
Again, when we, we looked at our market and where our market falls, we felt that the 245 was, was appropriate. And we also looked at the fact that the salary for this position had not been adjusted to reflect market changes for at least five years. It had been in that position due to the requirements of the Charter for at least the last five years. And so we, we felt that 245 was, was appropriate based on the market considerations.
Right. I mean, I think, you know, like, like we've discussed in the past, that the fact that it's under a consent decree, certainly when you look at the Police Department, which is not the highest-funded agency in the city with the largest budget, DPW is, that one would think that, being that both of them are under consent decrees, and certainly one can argue that the, the challenges are, are very great in DPW, things that need to be worked through, that, that this should be the number one. I also did have a couple amendments that I was going to present, but the Law Department shot them down. So I will, I will defer on those. But one of the key things that I was trying to accomplish under those was a structure where there would be a significant bonus paid to the Director on performance of reaching certain metrics, like resolving key issues that we know of, such as the water billing issues obviously have been in the forefront. But we also have, you know, the water pricing issue needs to be addressed as well. And having a Director, we need the top caliber DPW Director in the entire country, A, for the consent decree, and B, to stop these rate increases that are just year-over-year, you know, 9%, 10%, it's just, you know, it's, it's not manageable if the, you know, for these rate increases to continue. And so we really need somebody who's going to think outside the box and have the experience already and be at the top of their game to come in and get us out of the consent decree, but also to address those issues. So frankly, I don't think 245 is enough to get the number one DPW Director in the entire country here in Baltimore.
Thank you. Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't, my, my questions were covered actually in the market analysis presentation. That was really what my concern was, to ensure that we were both competitive and commensurate with surrounding and similarly sized jurisdictions. And it sounds like that's been taken into account. So nothing else to add there, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Stokes.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a question. Can, Mr. Herbie, can you?
Councilman, we're in trouble hearing you.
Any chairs?
Counsel.
Actually asked that question, but.
Can you start your question over?
About the increase, the Director, I think it should be increased with us, where the money coming from? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I think.
I just want to, Mr. Herbert, to explain where they're getting the money from for the increase for the D P W Director and how that process works.
Okay, got it. Thank you, Councilman. And I, can you hear me now? Yes, sir. I think that's listed in finances reports. I'm going to go to Mr. Moore for that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Councilman Stokes, to answer your question, the cost is approximately $70,000, but we are not seeking any additional appropriation. We've identified a line item for savings to cover the cost.
Okay, I just wanted to kind of ask you to share that publicly. Okay, thank you.
Aaron, what is that line item?
Service 670, Activity 3, and Line Item 326 for other professional services. It's typically used, it's been underutilized over the past couple of years. So we found some savings there to cover the cost.
Real quick, Mr. Chair, can I? Now, that money actually is used for contracting, right? That money you're taking from, is that for like, somebody coming in and they get contract work with D P W? Am I clear on that?
Other professional services, it's typically consultants and other type of white-collar support. It's, it can be used for that purpose, depending on the need.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Stokes, are you good?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Herbert, you mentioned, you mentioned a description of the responsibilities of a CEO of W S S C. Is that something you can provide to the committee in writing?
Sure, we can provide that.
Excellent. Thank you. Colleagues, are there any other questions? Or Councilman Dorsey?
Thank you.
Yep. You have four.
I don't have too many questions because most of what I would bring up is kind of off-topic of the, I think, the core of what we're here for, which is the assessment of salary and the need for the increase, which I think is real. I appreciate the diligence of H R and Finance in coming up with what seems to me to be an appropriate salary and capacity to affect the increase. And, you know, I'm just happy to see that we're moving this direction. I think we've all known for a long time that it doesn't serve the city well to have, you know, somebody who is solely experienced in, you know, water engineering as somebody who has to manage so much more than that, which is not just solid waste collecting, right? There's a lot of mowing and other kind of facilities maintenance that really goes beyond that type of, that specific type of engineering expertise or whatever. Just the same as it wouldn't make sense to have somebody who's an expert in zero waste running three reservoirs. It's really important for us to have somebody with a really broad management expertise. And I think that that's hopefully what we're going to get out of this by being able to really compete in the market. I do have the hope that having somebody who has that level of, the higher level of management kind of outlook that is perhaps nonspecific to either of these two fields really frees up the department leadership to empower and trust those leaders in these two other bureaus as well as in the meter shop and the billing department and customer service department. I have just found over and over again that in trying to work in certain situations, that it's hard to get people to exercise freedom to lead within the department and freedom to exercise their expertise and to collaborate well with others outside the department kind of bogged down in kind of a siloed kind of way. And so I'm really hopeful that, and I guess what I'm saying is that for those here from the administration, I want to make really clear that that is my hope and what we're pursuing here is somebody who is going to really empower those below them to exercise real expertise and independence in the way that I think that this department is set up kind of uniquely with like the only two bureau chiefs, anybody within our city government below a cabinet official level who has to be confirmed by the city council. We should really be seeking somebody who is there to empower those, you know, essentially deputy directors. So thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I heard everything that I needed to hear in the assessment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Herbert, Director Herbert, I just want to thank you for this analysis. This is very helpful to understand what comparable positions, even though there doesn't appear to be a comparable position to what the Director of D P W in Baltimore City has to deal with, are responsible for and would make. What I would ask is that you provide in writing, you know, that description that you provided of the CEO of the W S S C. W S S C, that sounded pretty comparable to what we're dealing with in Baltimore in terms of the scope of work. So if you could get that to us ASAP. In the meantime, I want to give our colleagues some time to fully digest what is in this spreadsheet here as well as that description, which you plan to provide to us in writing. So if you could get that to us, hopefully today. We'll go into recess, and then we will reconvene in the very near future. That will be announced on the council website. So keep an eye out for that. Thank you all very much for now in recess.